Call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, November 26th. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Brazza, Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Here.
Oh, that was, okay, Brazza.
It's like, that doesn't sound like Dustin.
Oh. Malone.
I hear.
Sulfah.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay. Uwe.
Here.
Vocal singer.
Here.
That is 11.
And item number two, as a reminder, just please speak directly into the microphone. Make sure you can see the little green light and hear yourself in the background if you come up to use the mic. Thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes for November 12th, 2024. We have a change.
Just had a quick change to update the, sorry. Items nine through 12 show that we took a vote on each of the tax levies, but we actually just discussed them, mentioned them, and said we would discuss them at this meeting. So there were no motions or votes for those.
Okay. Anybody else? Get a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
I moved. Second.
Motion by Beck, second by Lehman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.
Aye.
Next is item number four. Is it removed, added, or changed? Do we have anything this evening?
No.
Okay. Mark?
Can we move the budget resolution to before the tax levy since that would seem to be the order of operations?
Well, before.
Eight.
Eight.
I mean, we can have the public hearing, that's fine, but it's, I think we need to have, have a discussion on the budget first because I.
Sure. So what Peggy said about that is they can vote to recommend the levy ahead of the budget vote at Cow, but when we get to the city council meeting on December 2nd, the order for approval should be as it is below, which would be the levy prior to the budget resolution. So today, we can do it in a different order, but we can't do it in a different order at the city council meeting.
Why would we do it in a different order today?
If we, we can keep it in the same order as it is today, yes.
I'm saying, but why would, I just don't know why we would. If there's further discussion on the budget, why would we?
Last week's discussions did not have any objections to the expenses in the budget or the budget as presented. The only discussion was how the budget would be funded, and so I think that was why it was being presented in this manner.
And I watched the whole thing, and by the way, I recommend all our meetings go at 1.5 speed, like you can on YouTube. But I've had some discussions with some council members that I think would be relevant to have the further budget discussion before we talk about the levy.
Yes, and there is, the budget is still a matter for discussion.
I understand that. I just, it just, you may get a ton of no votes on this levy that, I mean, I know this isn't making a final vote, but I'm just saying that it just seems out of order. I know next Monday is when we make the final, but it just seems odd to me to do it in reverse here.
Isn't, isn't this the order Peggy says it goes in at city council?
At county.
I'm not sure why either. Maybe that's the question is why does it go in this order? Why don't we talk about the budget first and?
You know why?
I'm just trying to read through the lines here.
Sure, so the, we, like I said, there did not seem to be any, and if there are some who want to have discussion about the, the budget at this point, we should have the public hearing on the tax levy, and then we can move item 12 up to before eight, but we cannot do it in that order at the city council meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
That's what Peggy says.
That's fine. Just figured it'd be more wise to have the, in a logical order here when we can.
From last week's meeting, the, the only thing with the, the tax levy was is we set it at the rate that we did, knowing that we can always go below that, not above it.
Yeah, I watched the whole.
So that would always be finalized at the, the meeting when we actually approve it at council.
Understood.
Okay. So then we'll move 12 up to 7.5.
Yep.
Mm-hmm. Item number five is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Is anybody here for anything not on the agenda tonight? Come up. Just give us your name for the record. Wait, wait till you get to the, the microphone so it gets recorded.
Good evening. My name's Oscar Roman. I own Certified Towing and Recovery located on South River Street, providing service on a tow rotation for the city for a little bit over 20 years now, 365 days a year, 24/7, even on holidays. We show a response time of like 10 to 20 minutes on those windows. The reason I'm here today is because we see that there's a resolution for the, the next towing contract that you guys are going to be looking at. And myself and along with Duke and Lee's and Dazzles, who's a little bit late, but he'll be showing up, have kind of unified and kind of like come to an agreement and like, we've been working together for years now to make sure that we show camaraderie, we provide top-notch service to the village, and we love what we do. So in saying that, we, our percentage of toes throughout the years since COVID has been roughly around 144 toes a year. This is based off of 2023 numbers. It's dwindled down. That gives us an average, each of us, each company, around 12 toes a month. Not even a toe every day, but we provide service 365 days, 24/7. One of the things that is going to be set forth in that contract that's coming up, and with all due respect to the chief, who's wonderful, and thank you for your years of service, man, really appreciate it. The one thing that we have to unifiably disagree on is the addition of adding a fourth company to the rotation. We're asking the council to take into consideration what that would do to our numbers. We haven't seen an increase in towing, and one of the things in this proposal is going to show that each one of the companies that Batavia has chosen to deal with for over the last 15 years has shown impeccable service, response times, the way we work with the community, and the things that we take into consideration. So in saying that, there's not really a need for a fourth company, but what it would impact us on an individual basis, that would take our percentages from 12 toes a month to eight toes a month. This would strongly impact our business because, like I said, 24/7, even on Thanksgiving, even on Christmas, we have a truck on standby, ready to respond to the next incident, arrest, breakdown, accident, whatever it is. And we, and neither one of us are guaranteed to go out that day, but we still have to provide service. So we just, we really just ask you guys to take into consideration that small part of the, of the, of the contract that's presented where there's a, a suggestion of a fourth company. Take into consideration of, you know, looking at the amount of toes that's going on, if there's been an increase, and if it just duly needs it, if there's a lack of service, combined with all of us, we, you know, we provide non-stop perfect service. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I hope and wish you guys all a happy Thanksgiving.
Lincoln from Duke and Lee's, same thing with Oscar. It said, one concern I have is adding the fourth company is our insurance rates, you know, property tax, everything has gone up. We've tried to keep the towing per call down. We've kept our storage down. We, we're not getting a lot. Some vehicles do stay there longer than others. I know with the new regulations with the PDs that they're not doing the arrests that they used to, you know? So that does impact all of us in consideration of adding the fourth company. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Want to comment on that at all since that is on the consent agenda, chief?
Sure. So our tow contracts, police tow contracts come up for bid every three years. To give you some history, when I started here, we had one company, which was kind of strange because we would call for a no preference tow, and we'd get the same company over and over and over again. So since then, we've had three companies who we've primarily been using the last two to three contracts. That would be Dazzles, Duke and Lee's, and Certified. And like I said, that's been about the last six years or so that they've come in. All three operate out of our city, which is important to us. They're close, their tow yards are close. It gives us the opportunity to, if we need to go do further investigations on vehicles, they're close, and I would say that all three have done a remarkable job. No complaints. Last bid cycle, Rivera's Towing, who's the fourth towing company, had put in paperwork at that time. There were parts of their business, primarily their towing yard facilities, that were not up to par in the standards that we're looking for from a security standpoint. They have worked on that the last three years, and I have an officer, a traffic enforcement unit officer, who goes out and inspects these tow yards, talks with the owners and managers of the company. And at this point, there was no reason to, I guess, eliminate Rivera's. They're in our town also, just like the other three companies. And, you know, my suggestion to the council would be to give them a chance. So I don't specifically see an issue with having four companies. I understand that it does take away from, I guess, the business of the other three, but from my standpoint, I'm just looking for, you know, companies, in this case, four, who do an adequate job for towing for police and the city.
It's just the question would be, I understand that they're all, that Rivera's also in Batavia, but what would be the basis of needing four versus three versus, I mean, geez, two even, you know? I mean, I'm just saying why, instead of, you would think that it would be maybe reducing as opposed to increasing. So what's the reasoning behind that?
I guess just that we have four companies in town that are capable and able of, of doing towing and, you know, spreading that business around to the four businesses that we have in, in the city.
So if we ended up having six businesses in town in the next five years, would you assume that all six should be getting divvied up or?
I mean, I guess potentially, yes. The way the statute works on this, the authority for selecting tow companies is up to the chief of police. And I know that comes to you guys for approval, but.
Gotcha.
It's, the statute's pretty clear that it's by the authority of the, the chief.
Gotcha.
And rather than telling Rivera's, no, sorry, you know, we only need three, it just doesn't, makes, to me, it makes more sense to say, yeah, that's fine, we'll give you a chance as well, and put you on a tow rotation.
Yes, I'd be okay with it as long as it's on the rotation and it comes up, you know, as a cycle and everybody goes through and whoever can provide the service.
I should have explained that as well. So the way it works is you have, we'll have four companies, and they just go, they rotate through in order. Whenever a tow comes up, they just, Tricom just goes right down that list and calls the next available company. So that's how, how it works.
We just give that list to Tricom. It's not like we're involved in, in the call out on it. It's through Tricom when it happens unless you, unless you request one as a, you know, a stopper and off.
If a, if a customer specifically requests a tow company, we give that to them. Otherwise, the call to Tricom is give us a no preference tow, and then they have the list and they go right down it, and we get who's next.
Yeah, I, I would say the only potential problem with this is we, you set a precedent, right? I mean, if, to George's point, if, if a company is, if a tow company decides, hey, I maybe want to open my business in Batavia, they watch this, they're immediately going to assume I need to be a part of this list, I should be a part of this list. Now, that could be correct. I, so it's tough, but I mean, in normal, in a, in a lot of other things, you, you're going to lose quality here, right? We obviously have three folks that, that like the business. I don't think in this case you, you lose quality, which is why it's difficult to just take away from folks who have been serving us. But I do think we need to maybe think about setting a limit, whether that's, hey, we only go to five tow companies though, just so that we don't get, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but, you know, you get the eighth tow company that comes in and says, get me on the list now. No tow companies want to come into Batavia, you know, because they're not getting any business.
I think one of the things that chief has said is not wanting to show preferences for particular businesses, and so these are the four companies that did respond to the request for proposal. We've had towing contracts for, since time immemorial, and we haven't had a flood of people who respond to the tow contracts.
Yeah, I just, I look at this, there's four qualified candidates. How do I tell Rivera's Towing, yeah, you have everything that the other places do, but we're not going to give you a chance this time? That just doesn't.
Because it's a rotation, it's tough. It's not like a bid process where you're, you know, show me what you can do better or whatever.
Right.
You know, I get it. It's tough.
Long have the other three been in contract with the city?
I think we've been doing tow contracts for anywhere between eight to 12 years now.
But with these specific?
I'm sorry?
With these three specific?
Certified and Dazzles are our two oldest. There was a point where it was just the two of them, and then Duke and Lee's came on board sometime probably in the last six to nine years, and then it's been those three for the last three to six years.
The memo says over 15 years for Certified, over 15 years for Dazzles, and 10 years for Duke and Lee's.
Yeah, I just want to be cautious, you know? It's lengthy service, duly noted, and, you know, it's, it's worth discussing at least.
If you want to say something, come on up to the mic.
How I got put on the list was Kevin's Towing was involved with the three. He ended up going out of business, and we were the fourth company, and I had to wait until somebody wasn't available or they were removed from the list. I don't have a problem with Rivera's being on the fourth as if one of us, you know, decides to leave the list or the police department's asking for us to be removed from the list. I don't. But the revenue doesn't support four companies is the only thing with our taxes, insurance going up, employees' wages, everybody needs an increase. It's hard for us to give an increase to our employees if we're taking work away from us. That's my only thing. I mean, I don't have a problem with them being on the list, it's just not as a primary tow company for the city, just the way I was treated. And I don't understand why they can't be like that. Thank.
I follow a question then. Is that true? Was there four businesses before and one was excluded?
If it was, it was before my time in the police administration. I don't recall that being the case, but I don't, that could very well be true. Again, this is the authority of the, the chief that's sitting in the seat at the time that the tow contracts run out. I am, I am familiar with the last two contracts prior to this, or the last contract prior to it, because I was the one that was involved with getting the data together for Chief Yule at the time.
Yeah, so I think, you know, where a couple of questions are jumping to my head here. What I'm hearing is that there is a certain level of overhead that comes with being on these lists, I think is what I'm hearing, and the larger the list, the less likely businesses find it financially advantageous to be on the list, right? At some point, if we have too big a list, it sounds like nobody's going to want to be on there because they end up pricing themselves out, right? So I think I'm, I'm hearing that. I think that's what they're trying to tell us. I don't know anything about towing. I don't know much about how this business structure works, so I certainly don't feel capable of kind of having an informed opinion on this. What's, when do we have to have this con, when do we have to have this figured out by?
Up tonight.
I mean.
Like next.
Like next. We gotta like, we gotta like know what we're doing.
On a consent agenda. The current contracts run out at the first of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah. The time, time's up.
Yeah, we can, well, we can push it further into December if you want.
I don't know if I want to, I don't know. I don't know what I want. I've just too many questions right now.
I think with the questions we've raised tonight, I think we should take it off the consent agenda and put it on the next Cow meeting, and then we'll still have one city council meeting in December to approve it before the contracts are over. Chen?
When we do that, is it possible to kind of pull together some of the numbers for us to see kind of like the number of calls that have happened over the years? Not necessarily dished out to each company, but the overall calls that we've made for towing?
Probably. Yeah, I'm sure I could get the data from somewhere.
Okay. I think that might be helpful for us to be able to see that.
Okay.
Questions? Are we good with moving this?
Nick's got his hand up.
Nick's here.
And he's got his hand up.
Go ahead, Nick. I can't see anything. It's just the agenda on the screen, sorry.
No, no worries. I was, I was checked in at 7:02, sorry, I was late. I just wanted to, you know, I, I have mixed feelings on this, but there's a, a view that I see that I don't really, I'm not comfortable with. I mean, I get it, and if that was a city policy to have only three, then, then that carries some weight for sure, but to eliminate, you know, if our rule is if you're, you're in the city, go ahead, that's open market. If it happens to be six, there must be enough business for there to be six businesses to open. What I don't like, and I'm not comfortable with, is basically we're saying, hey, us three are in cahoots, we get the city contract, we'll split it up three ways, and we're going to keep out the fourth. That's what it feels like, and I don't like that feeling, so I would recommend that we, we do open it up for the fourth.
Okay, thank you. And that's one of the reasons I think we need to have a little more discussion on it before we vote on it. So I think with that said, I'd like to remove that from the consent agenda for tonight and put it on the next committee of the whole meeting as a regular item, agenda item.
Okay.
Someone like to second my motion?
I'll second it.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah, remove resolution 2024-149-R approving police authorized towing contracts. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. We'll move that to the next Cow meeting, whatever, the first or second Tuesday of December.
Second Tuesday, okay.
Right, 10th.
10th?
Yeah.
Okay. If you want to come back, we'll discuss that on the 10th. All right? Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to item number six, which is the consent agenda, which now is one item.
The consent agenda is resolution 2024-148-R authorizing execution of tax order number 48 with Engineering Enterprises, Inc. for design engineering services of the year three lead service line replacement project. I move, approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion by Beck, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Right, and we are definitely past seven o'clock for the public hearing on the 2024 tax levy. Bringing something up there, Laura, for the tax levy?
No, I'm just putting the agenda back up.
Okay, so where we, we left off the last time was approving, I believe it was a million raise in the tax levy. And are there anybo, is there anybody here in the audience that wants to talk about the tax levy this evening? Great. Okay. You'll have to come up and use the microphone as Laura's done there. Just give us your name for the record is all we need.
My name is Tom Born. Live at 1180 Pine Street. I sent an email to Chris and to, Chris, I'm sorry, and Jennifer.
We look so much alike.
I've lived in Batavia for 35 years, and unfortunately, my taxes last year went up 2,000, got my assessment, it's going to go up again, and then my wife said, hey, did you know about this 3% tax levy? I was like, what? So I wrote the email to you, and thank you for forwarding that on to Laura, and thank you for your long email today. But I'll just share with you, I mean, you folks all work very hard and do the best you can, and your employees do as well, but I have to ask the question, what is the culture of the administration here and its workers? And I bet if it went around to every person here, you'd have a different viewpoint of that. And I worked for Motorola, I was Director of Quality for North America, and then Director of Quality globally for the cellular infrastructure, and the way we characterize our culture is in three words, total customer satisfaction. And then you say, well, how do you do that? Well, it was Six Sigma. It was a quality initiative. Well, what do you do that with? Well, it's with everything that you do. And we got, at the high watermark of Motorola, up to 100,000 people marching to that same tune, because it developed the culture. So Bob Galvin used to come into a meeting, and he wouldn't look at finances, he wouldn't look at anything. The first thing he did was looked at his operational metrics for the area of discussion of the region, or the global, or whatever it was. So I just don't challenge in terms of what you're doing, or how you're doing it, but saying, hey, have you thought about instituting a quality initiative that can get all the people doing what they do do, marching to the same step in terms of their efforts and energies of what they do? And, and I'd share with you, I mean, I was taken back a couple of weeks ago, I was driving down Bond Street Route 25, and I saw about nine people on the corridor of Bond and Route 25, and I was like, wow, that's a wasted resource investment, you know? But again, I know that folks are working hard, doing the best they can, but the way that you can improve processes, get added value in terms of what you're doing, minimize expenses, and hopefully hold down taxes by getting some type of quality initiative, and Laura, it doesn't take a person to do that, and you mentioned that, you hired some people to do certain things, but what is the roadmap that they're using to guide them? So I shared with you that I have a roadmap that I'd be happy to share with you, as well as a metrics-driven approach that would become part of your business operation in terms of orchestrating, organizing, and guiding your people to not only doing what they're doing now, but to do it to the best of their ability underneath, you know, a fun environment where it's a spirit of Six Sigma, or Deming, or Plan Do Check Act, there's a lot of different things out there. It's not hard. It's a matter of setting the culture, of which, to be honest with you, I found that people yearn for. They're looking for it, they're looking for that leadership, and, you know, they want to be a part of something that's growing, successful, which it is, but, but to the highest possible attainment that it could potentially be. And I can share with you that in my job, I interfaced with a lot of cities, towns, that are doing this. Go do some benchmarking, you know? Go look at who's doing what, how they're doing it, and how you can maximize the efficiencies and effectiveness, and hopefully hold down the taxes. And I'll, and you shared with me that you're one of the lowest besides Geneva in terms of the tax rate. But I'm at a point now, and thanks for sharing that, I don't know if I'm going to stay in King County, let alone Batavia, because the taxes are just squeezing, squeezing me. I'm retired, 73 years old, and I'm like, you know what, I got to find someplace that's hopefully less expensive, that, you know, is more affordable, you know? And I don't, and I know you're being pressured on all sides, everybody is, but what I would ask again, how are you managing that in a cost-effective manner with a spirit of, of a collective mindset? You know, and, and I don't see it, to be honest with you. As a resident, I'll just share that with you. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address this about the levy?
Gentlemen who just spoke, you know, in old term, old way politics, there's always the idea of running government like a business.
I'm sorry, I can't really hear you.
Old term, you know, old term for government was, in certain parties, was to run a local government like a business, and I, you know, I think he's hitting on the fact that there seems to be waste, and things could be done better. Being retired, we do see a lot of things, and there is a lot of things, there is room for improvement, and people talk, talk about wanting to hold cost of living down, and taxes and what have you, but it's easy to see in Batavia the waste. And, you know, you guys are busy, like everyone agrees, but sometimes there's just some things that aren't being handled, and, and there is waste in Batavia. That's, I really wasn't planning on speaking today at all, but, you know, I see it all the time, and I'm not looking for it. You know, everyone here should be looking for it. It's your responsibility. If you don't want the responsibility of running it well, let somebody else do it. But we're not asking you to do it, you wish to do it, so, you know, you should do it, and try to do it the best you can, and, you know, there is a lot of waste. I feel bad saying it, but it's true.
I guess, at the microphone, what's the waste that you see?
Well, you know, you see extra people where they're not needed. I witnessed one time, four guys shoveling mulch out of the back of a dump truck, and each guy takes a turn watching the other guy shovel the mulch. I see people in places killing time, you know? Again, I'm not here to rat anybody out or pick on anybody, but, you know, it's not my responsibility to come up and run the village unless I elected to run for election and be involved, but it is people sitting here who want to hold the offices to do something about it. You know, it's not my job to come up and tell you you're not doing a good job. I'm not saying that, but people left unsupervised, well, you, you will, you won't get the best out of them. I supervised people my whole life, and people will fill their day. If you don't fill their day and make them productive, they will fill their day themselves. And it's easy for them to fill their days now with all the modern gadgets. You know, they can be on their phone and do everything else. Years ago, it was easier to keep them busy. Now, they can keep themselves busy, and so, I'm, I'm just asking you to think long and hard before just going to the easy way out and go to people and say, raise taxes, raise taxes, raise taxes, because it's, it's really not fair, you know? It's just not fair. Thank you.
I have a response to that, to a certain extent. We've had a lot of discussions about the taxes, and I mean, I, people, if they have actually watched these meetings, know that I'm relatively averse to financially, anything that costs, anything that costs money. I'm kind of on Alderman Ure's side in this situation, but the only examples you brought up is seeing some people maybe working on the streets, and though, I don't think that the tax, the tax levy has anything to do with anything like that, number one, and number two, when we're looking at the taxes, this is something I was thinking about, because I certainly don't like tax increases, and I was just talking about the assessments that came out. If you want to look at the taxes, about 70 cents of every $1 of your taxes, your property taxes, go to District 101, and then your property taxes on your house, that's assessed by the county, that has nothing to do with the city of Batavia per se. I mean, as, as Laura put out there, and I'm sure she can provide you, sir, with the same information about the taxes and the situation Batavia's in, we've been pretty darn good about keeping the taxes as low as possible, and I kind of take offense to you saying that there's just a bunch of city employees that are sitting around doing nothing.
Yeah, I do, too.
So, I, I find that, I find that offensive, sir.
In fact, one of the things we do is have our employees take their breaks in the field as a matter of efficiency, so that we don't have them charging the taxpayers for driving all the way back to their lunchroom, and then starting the clock on that, and with all the wear and tear on the vehicles and the miles that they would travel. So when you see someone sitting at Memorial Park in their truck doing nothing, it might just be that they're on their morning break, or they're on their lunch hour.
One thing I want to, and real quick, throw in there is I, you know, I sympathize. I get, I get why, as we're driving around town and we see this happening, it can appear that way, and I know from my experience, I didn't sort of fully understand labor until I worked labor, right? When I worked at Lake Shabana mowing far-off fields, I sort of understood why you might see some guys sitting around, or you might see four people shoveling mulch, or whatever it is, but it did take a certain level of education, and so I, you know, I'm not unsympathetic to what we're seeing, and I can understand why somebody might be saying, well, my darn taxes sure are going up, right? These guys are, you know, living off my dime. Part of that might be our fault from a marketing standpoint, right? I don't think a lot of folks understand what city workers do, and sometimes we need eight people on staff, and sometimes we need three people on staff, but you can't just let those other, you know, five people go. You got to find work for them, and I think we do a good job of that. But we have tools now, right? We have, I love these video initiatives we're using, I love the fact that we're beginning to see a little bit behind the scenes, and I might encourage feeding off of that to help allay some of the worry that our taxpayers are seeing. It might be worthwhile to kind of look behind the scenes and see, what does that mean? Like, why, why are there four guys shoveling mulch? Why are these guys sitting on Bond Street not appearing to do anything? And I think some of that might go, you know, a little, a little bit of exposure might go a long way to showing us kind of the hard work that is going on, because again, I also was taken a little back because I do know kind of the hard work that they're doing, and so, just my two cents on that.
I just kind of wanted to raise the question, were you sure those were city staff or private contractors that we work with who, through a bidding process, tried to deliver the lowest possible cost, so they get selected, and therefore, it can be argued, if that is how they're operating, I would say that's fairly standard operating practice for any system. That's the first side of it. The second being, there, we have actually been working, to the first citizens' point, we have been working quite a bit with improving efficiencies within our organization. Laura, of course, has done a lot, as well as our project analyst, Max here, has done some incredible work, and I've seen firsthand a lot of the great stuff he's been doing, not only helping the city have a better strategic plan that can be more easily identified and tracked online. I strongly recommend you check out sort of the work we've been doing there. It's an excellent interface of showing regular progress metrics, but also just doing a lot of great work coordinating between our agencies. It's, it's a very difficult thing, but for the amount of like, things that our city does, for the size of it, we really don't have as many people as you might think, and I would in fact argue, like, are we still at the levels we were before 2008 in terms of staffing?
We're right there where we were in 2008. It has taken us all that time to grow back to that level.
Yeah, and the city is, you know, has more people now and a lot more challenges, so I would, I would, you know, echo Alderman Sulfa's point that they do actually quite a bit, and there might be one-off cases where maybe somebody is taking a bit of a break. That's, that's pretty normal work culture, like, are all of us sinless in that way? I don't think so. Like, you can see those happen from time to time, but sometimes that's how those projects work out, and it's easier to look at that from the outside and say it's a concerning thing, when from the inside, I don't know if any of us would feel it fair to look at that, that way either, if we were doing that work. So, that's just my several cents.
Yeah, I would just share that if you went back into the city records on our tax rate, 40 years ago, our tax rate was about $1.04. In this last, I don't know, 10 years, it's been in the 70 cent range. We've, we've drawn it down about 34 cents over what it was back in the 1980s, and that has been caused by certainly a good working of the staff and the ability of ourselves to get a whole bunch of new businesses into town, specifically Randall Road with all the sales tax. In 1981, when that $1.04 was on the, on the property tax bill, the citizens, the city's sales tax rate was about $550,000 a year. Last year, it was almost 8 million, I think. So we, we make up a big chunk of what we're able to do here off of sales tax. And the other thing I would share is, is that right now, we are going through a building spurt that we have probably never had before, as far as the number of things that are being built. Just case in point, between 2020 and 2026, it looks like we are going to add about 900 new living units to Batavia. Many of them are houses priced in the 300,000 to 400,000 price range, and many of those have yet to go on the property tax bill. So my message to the council tonight is, is we're going to have the ability, you know, as we talk about where we're going to get the money to pay the bills, we've got, we're going to have some new money coming in. Right now, out on Kirk Road, we've got all the grocery stores is building, that's their corporate office out there, they're building a huge addition, multimillion-dollar addition on that building, and then across the street up at Kirk Road and Fabian Parkway, we got a new building that's yet to be occupied, it's finished, it's 545,000 square feet, so we're going to be getting some pretty significant new taxes in the next couple of years, so I, I would hope that we could keep our tax rate in Batavia in the 70 cent area range, you know, maybe a little bit higher and lower, but when we're in that, we're, final, final thing I want to say is, I in the last six months have had, I think it's seven mayors from the Chicago area, I just had one last week from the South Suburbs, call and want to need either send or come on down, or they want to come up and look at what Batavia's doing, that we can afford to have the tax rates that we have, because down in their towns, they're $1.50, almost $2 in some areas, because of just, they don't have any place else to find revenue, and they don't, they, they've lost a lot of stores, because people are breaking in and stealing and doing all kinds of crazy stuff. There's some of the big name folks have shut their stores down and left in toward the city, and so we're very fortunate to have the flow of money that we've got, and then I credit the council, and specifically our department heads, police, fire, public works, who are the ones that are out there trying to keep this thing going in a proper and positive way, and we've been very successful. And if you look at our neighboring, I'm not going to name names here because I'm not trying to stir the pot, but if you go on the tax rolls and look at what the city tax rates are, some of those who touch our towns, we're, they're so far ahead of us that there's one that's over $2, or they were over $2, and we're in the 70 cent price range, so we're doing pretty good as far as trying to tax people in the competitive world, and as has already been said, you know, we've got a couple other governments in town that are pricing pretty high, and that specifically is the school district, that, and people, many people move into Batavia because they want the schools, and so, you know, it is what it is, but I don't think the council has to sit here and make many apologies for the property taxes that we're sharing, because if you compare us to the rest of the world around us, we're in the low end down there, and we've got other cities wanting to know how we're doing it. So, thank you.
Does anyone have any comments? Any more comments from the public? Nick, do you have your hand up again, or just, is it still up?
Sorry, I'll take it down.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are no other comments, then I will close the public hearing. That's at 7:43. Okay, so, per direction from earlier, we will move the Resolution 2024-140R, the 2025 budget resolution for discussion. Alderman Ure, you want to start?
I would, thank you. Like I said, I watched the whole meeting, and Nick said most of what I was going to say, so I only have a couple of things that I just want to throw into there. One of the questions that came up in the meeting was like, well, how much, you know, we have, at the end of the 2025 budget, it shows we would have 178 days of reserves remaining, and that's 18,842,755. So I was like, well, what's the difference if we go to five, if we have another 500,000 or a million? Well, it's $105,858.17 a day. If we reduced the tax levy by a million, did not do that at all, it would change the reserves to 168.5 days. It's not a significant move of that needle. We talk about needing to have reserves for 60 to 90 days, we will still have 168 and a half days of reserves. So, that's the math that I'm going on, that we're not at that place that we need to move the taxes more right now. We have stuff coming out of Randall Road, we have more houses coming. I would like to sit back and wait. I would like to sit back and wait. The other thing that was in the budget that I believe I heard Peggy say, there's an extra payroll period in the budget?
Yes.
Which is like a million dollars. So there's your million dollars. So I would say no tax levy. And that's it.
Extra pay period of expense, right?
Correct.
Of a million dollars?
Yeah, it's an extra pay period. Pay period is about a million dollars. So that's our million dollars. Is it's, it's right there in extra payroll, which isn't going to happen in 2026. It will come back around every few years, it comes around.
11.
11? No, I think it's 7.
7.
So that's why I would say, let's not do anything, let's see what happens with our revenues, and just stick with no tax levy, no increased tax levy.
The only thing that I would point out there is that the budget initially had, was about $4.6 million short, capturing the additional EAV and keeping the rate the same, reduce that deficit by 1.1 million. And that brought us to the $3.5 million deficit. There's an awful lot of continuing expenses that are part of that 3.5 million. And so even with $18 million in reserves, there's only so many years that you can balance the budget on 3.5 million out of those reserves. And when you use it to cover ongoing expenses, it's just gone. It doesn't get to fold into another project. So for instance, if there's some capital project that we are short on doing, we could use our reserves to close the gap on that and be able to accomplish that project. If we are going to be building a new facility and we're going to have to be borrowing, we could use a chunk of our reserves in order to not have to borrow as much and save all of the interest that we would then not have to pay on that down payment that we made. So it is up to you. The reserves are healthy right now, and Peggy has done the five-year projections to show you that we think that there is just kind of a gap with the growth that we've experienced. We, in the next couple of years, will not have fully realized the benefit of that. And so it's just a matter of whether you're comfortable with, you know, paying things like the mortgage and car payment with our savings account, and to what extent. But I do understand 178 days.
Yeah, yeah, and that's more where I was going off of the days. And in fact, I'd like to, shame on me for not bringing this up in the past seven and a half years. We've never talked about the, like, had an actual discussion, except at budget time, and then we forget about it. We've never talked about, let's set, if the policy is what it is, 60, 90 days, I don't even remember, let's set something, and let's move to that number. And my suggestion would be anytime, again, this for later discussion, anytime we have reserves at the end of the year, we have a surplus, we should codify it that we take that surplus and put it into a fund outside of reserves, a fund for, say, infrastructure for when something bad does happen. And we're like, oh my gosh, we've got to do all this stuff, and now we've got this money. We would have millions of dollars in that fund right now, from the time that I've been on council, because we've been millions of dollars ahead in the time I've been on council. So like I said, shame on me. But I would say that that's a discussion I would like to have before my term does end.
And I guess I would counter with that, Mark. If we would have done that the entire time you've been on the council, we would have already had to raise taxes to be able to provide the dollars that we need to actually run.
No, because we'd still have these reserves, because we've never dipped into the reserves.
Right, but if you're saying to codify what the reserves were at the end of the year, and we would push those into another account, you wouldn't keep building the reserves up. That money would be segregated off, and it would be in an infrastructure account.
And we would have used it for different things that we use for infrastructure right now. It's, it's all, it's left pocket, right pocket. It doesn't go anywhere.
I understand that.
It's still, it's just, but it gives you that, that leverage that right now you're saying, oh, we're stealing out of reserves to do things, but you wouldn't be stealing out of reserves because our reserves are so overfunded right now. They're three times what they need to be. So.
So what I would say to that is, there's no need to put it in two different accounts. You could just establish what you feel should be the policy with regard to where you would like your reserves to be at, and whatever extent that you're over that is the amount that is available for the special projects that you can.
Sure. And I wasn't planning to have that discussion tonight, I think it's a discussion that deserves to be had, like I said. Shame on me for never having brought that up or continued it, because I've said stuff like that in past budget conversations. So anyway, I just wanted to be able to get in my few cents. Don't know if it's going to change votes or anything.
So I know that you mentioned that we received a grant for Prairie and Wilson Street, that we're hot, got that.
Received additional money through KKCom for that project. It wasn't a separate grant.
Okay.
It is.
Additional funds.
At a certain point, there's money that goes unused by other projects throughout the region, because they maybe can't come up with their match, or costs of building the project have increased so much, they can no longer move forward with the project. And then those monies come back to be redistributed to existing projects.
Right. So when this budget was put together, because right now it's showing that we're supposed to have a deficit of $400,000, was that money included in that, into this budget?
Yes, yes, that happened while we were building this budget, so the budget that came to you last meeting included that. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll reiterate my point is that I'm afraid if we don't do some type of raise to the rate this year, we're going to come back in a year or two or three and have to have a much bigger increase. And, you know, I just don't want us to be in that situation. I don't want to, you know, hand that off to somebody else in a future administration where they have to come in here and they have to deal with the fact that we decided to spend down our reserves and not worry about how we were going to replace that, you know, in three or five years. And then that's where I think a little step at a time makes more sense than a huge jump at one point. And that's what I'm afraid of, us doing it.
I'm just going to reiterate what I said last time of where it's not going to hurt those of us that are on the higher end, it's going to hurt the residents that are on the lower end, and with a lot of uncertainty that's going to be coming in the next year with the new administration, and what we're hearing with prices and what could be going on, it does make me a little bit nervous that we're going to implement even this much of a tax increase for the residents. Because what we're hearing of what is being implemented isn't going to be just somebody going out and getting a car, it's going to be everyday items that's going to affect residents. And if I'm able to be able to help residents now, a year from now when our prices are up, I'm not going to be able to help those residents and include those programs. And Kevin, I know that you said we can help residents, I feel like you kind of brushed it off, because that takes money for us to be able to do that, which we don't even have money to create those programs for the people.
Yeah, and you're right, you're right. You know, that came off as a flippant comment, but I don't believe it to be flippant, and I'm committed, and I hope we can all work together to find savings for our residents. I think I share your outlook. These coming years, I think, are going to be tough, and I draw the opposite conclusion, right? If we don't raise the rate, we'd be looking at drawing down 19% of our reserves. That's a huge chunk of our reserves. We can always go back, and we can, we can lower taxes. We take it as a truism that we can't lower taxes, but that's not true. We've done it before, we can do it again. We can't just magically come up with reserves. I don't know how you can draw down 20% of your reserves in the hope that it'll come back. I don't think Alderman Yure and Saron are necessarily wrong in that we have been conservative in our budgeting, and we have been beneficial, you know, we've benefited from having our coffers refilled. But if a 25% tariff on everything from Mexico and Canada is coming in, we might need those reserves, right? And I recognize that we are asking the citizens to shoulder that, right? We're asking them to shoulder a slight increase in their property taxes, and we can say, it's the school board, it's the school board, it's nice, we have a good cover there, but we need to own. I am asking that we raise taxes on our citizens, and I'll own that, because we have uncertain times tomorrow, so let's keep our coffers full today. When tomorrow comes, let's draw down the coffers, let's do what we need to do. But today, we don't have that uncertainty. Today, we have the ability to keep things above board and plan for the rainy day that we see coming. So I think we're coming from the same place, and I share your concerns. I think I'm drawing sort of an opposite conclusion there.
Chris, and then I'll go to Nick next.
Okay, and I think when I spoke last time about this, there was at least some people nodding their heads with me, where I was kind of more in the middle. Okay, fine, I can, I'll listen to the gloom and doom, even though I pointed out reserves come from somewhere. I mean, the reserves, just because you spend them, doesn't mean they're going to not get replenished. So that's why I was kind of more compromised and not do the full, and maybe just go halfway, instead of a million, 500,000, and then see how it goes next year. You can reassess. We don't know what's going to happen, I mean, nobody knows. But what if we all of a sudden get an influx into the reserves, and it makes it up, and then we don't need it anymore? And whatever, I mean, but then if we don't, or if there's something bad that happens, we did do a little bit of an increase to protect ourselves. That's why I was kind of more, you know, I don't even want to say increase, but if everybody's going to vote against it anyway, vote against me that way, I'd be more willing to compromise to kind of halfway.
Nick? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just curious to run the numbers. Is that, what's the percent it would be drawn down?
Math, I did what it looks like, Laura's, I don't know if you can see, she's flipping through. When I did the math, it's 3.5 off of 18.8, got me 19.1% of our reserves, but I'm not sure if I'm doing that right.
Is that taking the full?
That's the full, that's the full.
That's a 3.5, right?
That's a 3.5 million out of the 18.8.
And that's just this year. So next year, the 3.5 million deficit exists, and we have to cover that somehow. So in essence, doing this does kick the can down the road to say, maybe there will be greater revenues than have been forecast by Peggy.
Hasn't that always been the case? Haven't we always outpaced projections?
That's why we have reserves.
Typically, it has come not in having revenues outpace, but it has more come from, due to a lack of staff, not being able to get to as many of the projects as we needed to. Particularly on the IT side, a lot of those have gone multiple years.
Now we're looking at a colo space, and we're doing a lot of things in the IT space that, yeah, we should look at. I mean, there's some prices on there.
When the projections, and they probably are in there, and the grocery tax, is that written into the projections? You know, like, we're all of a sudden assuming that we're going to be implementing that because we are getting it right now, it's going to be taken away at the end of 2026? You know, with, when she did the projections, was that included in the forward projections?
Yes, because that's, you know, 1.4 million to the city, so I could not recommend us eliminating that 1%, but that keeps us flat by keeping the 1% in there.
I'm all for that, too. I mean, I can't believe the state's taking it away to begin with.
Because it doesn't affect them. That's why they're okay with taking it away and using it as a feel-good for the population, because the state just passes that through. So it doesn't affect them, it's local governments that are going to get hurt by it.
Well, then we're not sending the money off, and then it's less hands touching it. It's just coming to us directly.
Well, they still would administer through sales tax, right?
They'll still charge us an administrative fee, and they're the ones who collect it.
Because they'll be collecting the sales tax.
Yeah.
It's just, our institute is sales taxed if we do that, not the state's sales tax.
Similar to our home rule, sales tax. It's still the tax that's there that we're paying.
I mean, that's, you know, I completely understand the train of thought, you know, where you were going down, Kevin, but I tend, my mind tends to go in the opposite direction. Tough times, give the money to the people, they're the ones in it. We should be able to figure it out, is how I look at it. If we really do think that tough times are coming, which I don't particularly, but if we really think that that's what's going to happen, you know, in my opinion, and I do also think we're just jumping the gun a little bit. I mean, I just think we have so much on the horizon here that can be bringing revenues, and I know some of that has been projected, if all of it's been projected, whatever. But again, I, I just, I don't think it's the time. We always talk about, you know, how we want to make this town affordable, and, you know, and I, and I get it, don't get me wrong, but, but I also agree with some of the citizens that there's probably ways we can sharpen pencils, way we, ways we can do things better. I know we've looked at many, many things, there's all, yeah, right? And, and business, and life, whatever, there's always things we can do a little bit better. But, you know, and I'm not saying that a, that a tax increase doesn't come at some point in time, I just feel like right now is just a, a tough time to, to throw it on the people rather than us take at least a year. And, you know, I could be, you know, I could, I could be talked into convinced or whatever to go more down Alderman Sulfur's path of something, but, I mean, it would, it would have to be minuscule. And I know my head was originally in a different spot here, but I've had some time to think about it, and I just, you know, and, and looking at the budget and things, and just diving into numbers, I just, I just think there's ways that we can go back and look at things. And I'm long on our town. I think more people are going to want to come here, more businesses are going to want to come. I mean, we're booming. We got a lot of buzz around Batavia, and I don't think that's slowing down, so.
I do, too, but please recognize what a strain that puts on providing services to all of that. And if we're not going to.
We got to figure it out. We can't just burden the people with it, you know, because if I'm sitting on the other side of the equator.
Actually, so what we can do is either reduce the expenses. So if, if what the mandate is, is.
Are we? I'm sure we can reduce expenses.
Because we should pass, we're actually legally obligated to pass balanced budgets. So we'll only be able to pass balanced budgets for so long as we can eat into our reserves. And then when we get to the point where we meet that reserve policy, then we start cutting services each year.
But if we had, have we had to do that yet?
We have not, because we have.
So I'm having to eat into it, we're just, we're going to jump the gun.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Our projected finish for this year is that we're going to take a half a million dollars of reserves this year.
And that'll be the first time.
And I can't say that that's the.
That we pay the car payment and the insurance or whatever with the.
There's like two or three other years.
Two or three other years in the last 10.
15 years.
Yeah.
10 to 15 years. Okay, so not unprecedented, but not, not very common. I, I, you know, and maybe part of it is everyone else's tenure in the town versus mine, but I just have this great outlook on where we're going, and I just, I, I feel, you know, it's just bad timing. I don't know, it's, part of it's a gut feeling, part of it's, you know, we got Tesla coming in, we got the cannabis shots coming in, we got two more neighborhoods coming in, we got, you know, things are, things are building, and I think there's even going to be more, so. Yeah, I think, I think we can approach it at a later time about increasing the taxes.
I think we, most of us, I would hope, around this table would agree that Batavia's a desirable place to live. We've all chosen to live here, and there's a reason for that, and it's part of it, it's the quality of life that Batavia offers. And, but that comes, I'll say this, at a cost. Like, you don't get the quality of life in Batavia for free. And I think a lot of us, when we move here, we understand that. There's other states we could live in, there's other towns, there's other counties we could live in. We chose to live here, most of us, I think, intentionally. And we also have city services that are destination places, our police department, our fire departments. People are coming here because they're excellent departments, and the only reason we can offer that is because of these budgets. So if we start cutting and we start telling our departments, no, you can't have the staff that you need even though you have here increases, we're going to start seeing a decline in our quality of life in Batavia. So that's, that's kind of what, how I'm coming to this budget, and not even for this year, and I said this in our last meeting, this is just to balance this budget. But we all know there's projects, there's staffing that we want to see done in the next five, 10 years. So how can we even begin to discuss these other things we want to do? Our strategic plans for our departments, for the city. Our strategic plans for our departments, for the city? If we can't even, right now, balance today's budget? So we can't even begin to talk about what we're going to do with our dam, what we're going to do with new roads in town, or what we want to do, see our downtown, how we want to see our departments grow or become better, or to actually meet the needs that they're doing right now. They're, we can't even begin to discuss a new bridge in town, if that, if we're ever going to come to that. So I just, my goal here is, the way I'm voting on this is future planning, so.
I very much wanted to echo the thoughts on the future for everything that we hope to do in this town. Everything, we need a balanced budget, absolutely. And I know this was not something that was brought to us lightly in any way, shape, or form. I know none of us are taking this lightly at all either. It's a huge decision. But yes, I am coming at it from the angle, same as Alderman Lehman, wanting to maintain and grow what we have and what we can offer.
Dustin, go ahead.
This is wading into a more long-term discussion, going back to the grocery tax, but on, in regards to concerns about effects on lower-income residents, sales taxes and especially grocery taxes are far more aggressive than property taxes. Property taxes have some issues as well, and that's a much deeper discussion. But I guess, kind of throwing it out there, I'd rather see us raise money through this route than necessarily a grocery tax. And honestly, this is, again, for a much later discussion in the year, I would, I would see this as the more stable option for lower-income folks for whom a grocery tax is digging into their discretionary income, or lack of discretionary income, a lot more. That's just my two cents on that.
Yes, one thing that I've thought about over the last week or more was, you know, we have voted on downtown master plan, on a comprehensive plan, and we're trying to, you know, fund the things that we said we wanted. We're looking at another corridor study on South River Street to try to find things that we want our town to be. And yet, we all say, it's great, it's good, and then when we get to budget time every year and we want to fund it, everybody says, no, I don't want to raise taxes, I don't want to do anything. You know, we can't have both. We can't do both things. You can't just rely on what you think is coming. You have to try to plan for that. And, you know, if we are going to do anything with the dam, if we are going to do more bank stabilization downtown and try and really highlight the things that we do think are really important in this town, we have to be able to fund that. And, you know, if the majority of the council feels better with partially funding that out of reserves or less of a tax increase, then I think we should consider that and not just give up on a tax increase or walk away from that, take it all out of our reserves, and then, okay, it does go south, things get bad in the next two or three years, there's no way we're going to be able to raise taxes and continue on the path that we think we're on for the city and make the good things happen and draw the people into this town at a time when it will be extremely important to have that kind of support and that kind of growth continue. And, you know, just what I've seen since COVID, we're one of the towns that's been able to pull it off and to continually pull it off and not see continual shutdowns, you know, throughout town in a bunch of different businesses. I mean, I see it every day on the news. I read it every day in a paper. It is unreal around here how much is closing, and we're not seeing that. So I think we're on the right path. I just don't want to see us give up on that to say we didn't raise taxes. Even if it's just a little bit this year, I think we definitely need to consider that. So we can continue to do the things we want to do, add the staff that we really are going to need as things grow, and be able to have the kind of technology that we want, to be able to do the things we need to do to make the organization better, and to try to keep going down the path that we voted on, that we said we wanted to occur in this town. So I think it's really important that we don't kind of lose sight of the big picture to say, do we write a check or do we take it out of savings? I really want to see us make that choice tonight and not beat this up too much more.
Abby?
My notes are really fuzzy from last week. Did we vote, when we finally voted, was it a $500,000 take from, additional $500,000 taken from reserves or an extra $1 million taken from reserves? Do you remember?
The only thing that was voted on, I listened to the whole thing, and as far as I can tell, because it was a little bit confusing, there was so much time between the motions made and the vote taken, Peggy said, all I need from you today is the direction that I can post a public notice for the $1 million more in levy, and then you don't need to decide anything today about the actual amount you're going to levy or the budget until the 26th.
Up to a million dollars.
Up to a million, we can do anything below that or zero.
We could say a trillion right now, we have a, you know what I mean?
No, because what's been published was the million, the million extra to the levy, and that's what was published, so anything below that, all the way to zero, we could pass.
Right. And I've been having an argument in my own head this whole time, going back and forth about this. I feel like I'm still landing on the side of maybe $500,000 more from reserves and $500,000 tax increase. I, too, am so excited about, I'm excited about this budget and what it funds. I'm really excited about the state of Batavia. I'm excited about what's coming in. The neighborhoods are barely going to pay for themselves, so I don't think we should look at our neighborhoods as being a moneymaker. So that's just net neutral there. There are a few other tax generating things, but is it enough to really make that big of a difference? But I do have that lingering concern about pricing people out of, out of the town in general, but want to see this incremental step up. And I also trust this council, and I'm just really impressed over the past couple of years, more specifically in the past maybe year, at the way that we have been approaching these topics, that we've been approaching these conversations, the ideas that are presented, that I also really trust us in coming out of COVID, that if things do take a turn and things do really get bad and we have to reevaluate our spending, that we will recognize the needs in our community, reprioritize those funds that we have budgeted for and we've collected, that we'll institute the programs that we know will actually go to address those questions and those problems for people. And so I'm going to feel comfortable walking out of here either way with this budget, to be honest. Probably going to vote to only, to scoop out a little bit more out of reserves, but not the full amount. But there's a little insight into the back and forth in my head so far tonight.
I think when on camera, he must be serious now.
You ready to talk now, that we can see you? Go ahead.
I didn't, I forgot I had a tape thing over the camera, so that wasn't on purpose and it was off. No, I just wanted to reiterate and I guess to Leah's point about, and Tim, both of you guys mentioned one thing about being optimistic and thinking about the future and things like that. This question isn't about the future. I think we've all proven in getting together with a vision and that type of thing, and also the fact that this is the first year since I've been on council that there wasn't any really back and forth on any budget item. We, I think we've given 100% support to the staff's vision and their operating abilities and whatnot, and we're there. This is just a question of whether, do we raise taxes or do we take money from where people already paid their taxes? Keep in mind, this isn't our savings account, this is money that, you know, the residents have put in to this already, so it's not like we're taking a loan to pay this so we don't pay taxes. I mean, it's there. And so I would continue, as I know, you already know, support not, not raising taxes, using the reserves and waiting to learn more before making a decision.
Robin, go ahead.
Okay, well, since everybody else has said their piece, I do want to kind of put my opinion out there as well. Like everyone else, I've gone back and forth and wrestled around with this over the last week quite a bit, and I really find myself falling in more so with Alderman Beck, where I would be comfortable with maybe going under a million but not 100% funding our reserves. So just putting it out there.
Yeah, just two last things. So, yeah, I love the plans we have for the future, our strategic plan, the things that we're thinking of. I've said it before, when we've done those strategic planning, that we need to extend those horizons, and I think that's one thing that we really have to pay attention to, is if we think we're going to be tight on funds, then it's like, okay, it doesn't have to be a three to five year, this can be a five to 10-year plan that we, we invest slowly over time rather than, okay, let's get all these things done. Because I realize that it's like, and Nick brought up a good point, that there's no pushback. I didn't come in and say, you know what, let's scrap this, let's do this, to try and trim this budget, which I've done many times over. And so I'm in agreement, like, again, with the spending, like Nick said, but we need to think about that as these years go on. It's like, what do we decide that it's like, okay, just push that a little further. I know things get more expensive later and everything, but it'd be the same thing if you were remodeling your house. You might be like, oh, you know what, I'll just do a bathroom this year and then maybe another bathroom next year. And you push it out over a few years because you're not going to spend it all at one time. So we just have to be very careful about that. And then lastly would be, I'm hearing a lot of it, and I could, I can agree that I would say, yeah, let's do half, let's do half a million instead of a million, and I'd be comfortable voting for that. And I've heard a lot of that, and I could, I could get on with that.
One of the things I just wanted to point out was Peggy had provided you guys with five-year projections on revenues and expenditures, and she has projected total expenditures next year to increase by 2.8. So if we add in, that's adding in about half of the employees that we had projected but taken out of this year's budget. She just kind of lays those in over the next four years, including the recommendations in the fire department staffing plan as well. So just, next year's budget will come and it could possibly have a $6.5 million difference.
Yeah, that's a little bit of a leadway into what I was kind of thinking here. First off, I think I said it last time, I'll just say it again, half measures make me nervous. I mean, if we're going to do it, I say do it all the way. I'm sensing the winds, though, that we might end up with our, you know, sort of a half measure. And next year, if we find ourselves in this position again, you don't have to do, I won't ask for a told you so or anything, but we need to be prepared to have this discussion all over again, right? We need to be prepared for two tax increases back to back. I think one tax increase is the better approach, but if we want to do a half measure and we find ourselves short, I think we need to really be honest with ourselves and be ready to do that. Because we might, you know, I hope you're right, Mark. I hope you're right. I hope those funds increase. You know, three, just three very quick things I want to say. I know that sounds like a lot. First, I hope for the folks in the audience, the folks listening at home, they're really paying attention. I've heard it said a lot, that raising taxes is the easy route. There's nothing easy about this, nothing at all. I am agonizing over this, and I think all of you are as well, right? I think that that's being evident, so I just wanted to make that clear. The two threads I don't want to lose. First, I think Mark is absolutely correct, that we should start thinking of what is our policy for reserves? Whether that ends up being the extra goes into some other fund or we set sort of, we're going to have a six-month reserve policy, or we're going to have a this or that reserve policy, and then stick to it, kind of know what we do when we go over. It's something that might save us some time, effort, and energy in the future and make us better stewards. So I don't want to lose that thread, and I hope that we can find a time to follow up on that when it's more appropriate. And then the second thread I don't want to lose is the providing relief, right? We are in a unique position where we do control our own utility. That's a pretty exciting proposition in a lot of ways. I know there's a lot of constraints, there's only so much we can do in that avenue, but, you know, we have a little more control over that than folks who don't. And there are other ways we can, you know, grocery taxes and other sorts of things where maybe we can provide a little relief when we're asking for a little bit here, but we can kind of relieve the tension over here. There's some ways we can do that. Because I think Dustin made a really great point, that property taxes, while not exactly progressive or flat, are a little less regressive than, say, a grocery tax, where the folks buying local are the ones who can't drive to Costco in St. Charles or can't, you know, do whatever. So this is hard. Let's, you know, think of our policy for reserves, and let's be serious about finding other ways to sort of relieve that pressure on the other end.
Robin, did you have your hand up again?
No, I just left it up. I'll take it down.
So I guess what I'm hearing, and I think I would like to propose here, is that we were originally going to take a million-dollar increase in the levy, and that's what we voted on last meeting to authorize to go into the paper with so that it was legal, that we could go up to a million. The midpoint, if we took the 500,000 out, more out of the reserves, that would be a split on it, that would drop us from $91 a year to $46 a year. To make that a little easier to, I don't know if you want to say sell it or a little easier to swallow, however you want to look at that. I do want to caution that that's probably a discussion we're going to have again next year. And if it's not a good time, if it's, you know, if things don't pan out the way we hope and think that they're going to go, then we are going to have to have discussions about what things that we have that we pushed out of this budget that we're going to have to push out of next year's budget. So that's the reality of doing, as Kevin called it, the half measure. I think, having been around this table a lot longer than most of you, I think that's probably where we should be. And knowing that some of us aren't going to be here, some of us will, you know, we're going to have to make that commitment or try to be ready for that discussion if we're in that position next year, if we go halfway this year. You know, I'm still with Kevin, I think we should be doing the full measure, we should be doing it that way. And even though that is a bigger chunk, it's on the path to where I think we are going to have to be in five or 10 years. And if we don't do it now, it's going to be really hard to get there in five or 10 years.
Leah?
Question, that $91 a year, is that on a $300,000 house?
No, that's on a $400,000 house. On a $300,000 house, it's only $67.
And that's for the million dollars?
And that's for the one million.
That's for one million.
All right, so that's $7.5 a month.
Yeah, $7.50 a month.
On a $400,000 house.
That's correct.
For a million-dollar levy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Or we could put it in ways we can understand. That's large Oka.
Or for like a $200 house, even though there's not that many in Batavia, we're talking about like $3.75 a month. Yes. Okay.
So, you know, it's something I think everybody can relate to when you break it down into smaller numbers like that to see that. And again, remember, the only thing everybody sees in town is the end dollars on their tax bill. They don't care if 70% goes to the school district and 10, 10, and 10 go to the park district of the city and the library. That doesn't, nobody looks at that. They look at the bottom number on the bill. So, you know, it does add to that. Granted, it's a much smaller percentage, but it's still something we have to think about. And I guess that's why, unless somebody else wants to propose something different, I'll make the motion that we add $500,000 to the tax levy. And that's what we do. Instead of the original million that we were going, that we published for, we'll go with 500,000 and then take 500,000 out of reserves, additional out of reserves.
Ask a question?
Sure.
If that gets voted down, then what's the next step? What are we voting on?
Whatever somebody wants to propose. We can pick numbers all night long, we just can't go over a million because that's what's got published.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Would it be appropriate to do a straw poll to see where people are at, or is it...
I'd rather just vote on this because I don't want to be here till midnight tonight.
Second. I was second to your motion.
I was seconding your motion.
Right.
Oh, okay. I thought just not wanting to be here until midnight.
Yeah, both, both. So at this point then, we'll open that up for discussion before we vote on it. We'll have a discussion on it. So Robin and Nick, if you want to say anything before we vote on this, now's the time. If anybody else up here wants to say anything else. If not.
Just a procedural question. Probably going to vote no on this and then jump over to the, to the full amount. Is that our next vote?
Whatever you can propose.
Whatever we propose.
You can make a motion for zero.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm going to tell the world what I'm going to do so that maybe, maybe, right, I'm going to vote no on this and I'm going to ask for the full amount and then I'm going to re-propose the half amount. All right? Because I want this to go down to see what people, where people are at on the full amount. Because that's what I want. And that's what I want voted on first. If that sinks, then I, then that gives me an idea of where I'm going to vote. That's my gamesmanship here, right? I'm just going to lay my cards on the table. All right?
So you just skip a step and try to get it done.
I hear what you're saying, but I want you to know that.
I know.
Yeah.
Just as a comment, I mean, calling it a half measure, I think, is not appropriate. This is a compromise amongst discussions that people have had as the path we want to take. The million dollars can be called an arbitrary number in itself. Completely arbitrary, pulled out of nowhere based on all these numbers and projections. No, I mean, these are all, these are all based upon projections. So I mean, it's just as arbitrary as anything else. So calling it a, calling it a half measure, I think, is inappropriate. It's a compromise amongst the discussions that we have all had and the deep thoughts that I believe everybody's put into this.
Spoken like a lawyer.
Wait, but who's the lawyer? Who's the mediator here? Hold on a second, hold on.
Can you say that with a smile? Please.
I would encourage you to approve this. I don't want to overemphasize this, but we are looking at an increase in our assessed valuation collectively of the city, which is the total number that the taxes are drawn off of. We're going to have a significant increase in that value with what's happening in this town, with what you've approved. You know, the two subdivisions out west, or one there in the furnace property and the one out on McKee Street are going to add over 300 new houses to Batavia. And they're all probably selling in excess of 300,000. Many of them, much more than that. And we've got some other, you know, we just had the Batavia Commons fill up out on Kirk Road. That's 242 units. And those are all selling in the 300s from what I can, or more is what I can claim. So we have this significant EAV increase that, on the likes of which, I don't know if we've ever seen it this good before. So I just think the council should be cautious on what you're doing here. Don't go overly zealous, but don't go under. Because I think we've got the opportunity here to hopefully give the taxpayer some relief over what we originally said. And the same token, we're going to have some new stuff coming in on us that's going to add to that, that number that we assess against. And that may make next year even a nicer time. We'll see. But there's a whole bunch of money, again, that's coming into Batavia right now. It's in the process. We've had to hire more people in the community development because we need more building inspectors. We've got, we've got them now, but we needed them because we had so much activity. And then we've got all kinds of people adding all onto their homes and putting on room additions and everything else. So we're rolling really good. And as I say, I talked to other mayors and they're talking to me in envy because where they're seeing all this stuff happening in Batavia and they wish it was happening in their town. But we're, we seem to be sitting in the right place at the right time. And so I just want to, there's nothing bad about any of this conversation, but I think your action will give some relief to the existing taxpayer, not a lot. But we won't be overly taxing them. And I think next year, the EAV is going to be up there. So maybe we can kind of hold it where we are now. We'll see. But there is a lot of new stuff happening in this town that we should be pleased and we're going to be able to use for our taxpayer advantage.
Peggy's estimate over the next several years is significantly higher than in prior years due to the, the building that Mayor has mentioned. Accounts for about an increase of $700,000 per year toward the deficit.
Kevin? Yeah, just a quick, just so I know what we're voting on. If we, if we go with the $500,000 tax levy, how much are we pulling from reserves?
Three million.
Three million from reserves.
That's, it would reduce reserves from 178 days to 173.72.
Just 17.
I think it's super important to keep reiterating that. Every time we say that, it hits me that we have, and then I think the standard is what? 60 to 90 days or 60 days, I think, is the quote unquote standard. I like being way above the standard. I love where we're at, but I mean, we should really, I mean, I know it's been said, but we should really look at putting a solid number at that. 120 days or 115 days or whatever. And then at that point, this is way less of a conversation. It's like, we got money to play with, so to speak. Yeah, anyway.
Look at that.
Right, exactly.
Whether it's in capital projects or development deals, there's other things.
Not to pay salaries.
Yeah.
Investor in times of uncertainty, like right now, where it's like, we're just right on this cusp of like, it's a, it's a tough timing, you know? And without historical data to point at and say, see, it happened there and there and there and there, you know, we just, we don't have that. Because we've been thankfully on a, on a great trajectory up in the town.
The mayor makes a good point bringing up all the new development. We also have to think about how do we take care of that? How many miles of road do we have to take care of? How many employees do we have to have to cover that? Police, fire, streets? I mean, there, there's other expenses that come along with that increase in revenue.
And I'd love to see that metric because I don't think it's probably that much. I mean, you see the footprint of those neighborhoods.
So the fire department study says 12 additional firefighters, which is about $2 million.
For two neighborhoods?
No, these, the projections over 10 years.
Over 10 years and years. Okay, different story.
But traditional suburban developments like rear buildings have historically not, the tax revenue generated from that land development has not covered the infrastructure expenses that goes into that.
Yeah, and, and, you know, respectfully, Mayor, I think those are going for five, six, 700,000.
They probably are. I'm just trying to be conservative.
And I think those people are going to be here spending money.
Oh, absolutely. And that's the other point I did not bring up is, is that we are getting all kinds of inquiries for new businesses wanting to move in.
And they see that many rooftops, you're going to have businesses locate in that spot.
And Randall Road had some vacancy. It's filling up now. Downtown Batavia is filling up now too. And it's all these new people want to get in here because the word is out that we've got a town that's growing and it's being, it's growing in the right way. It's growing with people who got money in their pocket to come in and buy and move in and have money in there to go out and spend.
I think as an outsider, when you sit and if you're not sitting at here, you go, okay, that town should be able to withstand, you know, my taxes should not continue to be going up in those towns where businesses are coming in and more people are coming in. You know, I mean, I'm just, you know, I'm throwing it out there. I'm not a genius on this stuff.
Right now, it's we're holding, trying to hold taxes where they are that we're not trying to raise it too much to put more things in place because there is the promise of more revenue coming into this town in the next two to three years. I don't know if Peggy, I think, has made a pretty good conservative estimate as to where that's going to go. And that's going to be a wealth of new money that we're going, this council, why I'm confident we'll use in the right way.
Just to point out, when you look at some other communities in comparison, we'd probably say Palatine is a pretty successful community. And they're at 98 cents. Buffalo Grove, we'd probably say that's a pretty successful and has experienced explosive growth. They're at $1.5. So just know that benchmarking us, we are still very much on the low end of things.
I grew up in that area. I would not consider us anywhere close to the size or complexity of a Palatine or Buffalo Grove. I think we are at an infant stage where we can, we can withstand this blow of whatever it is, 10 days to our reserves to figure this out. I'm not saying we dive into our reserves every time we have a problem or every time. And absolutely, we need the forethought and we need the foresight to, to potentially raise the taxes if that's the case. Again, I just think we're jumping the gun. I, I think, yes, not only will we have these conversations, we should have these conversations next year. We should make a date when we're going to have these conversations. Maybe start them earlier, right? You know, and, and that way, you know, we, we don't have to do that again. But I think we're doing the best by our constituents by holding off and taking a look at this. So my, yeah, my, my vote's a no vote there. Yeah. Got a motion in a second.
One more comment, Leah gets it.
No, I was just, I was just going to say, I, I suggest that we put the vote out because I think we all kind of know where we're sitting right now. And we could talk, we could argue back and forth all night, but it's not really going to change anything at this point, so.
Hey, guys, shut up.
Okay, so we're, we're going to vote on
She was talking to me too.
Reduce, reducing the levy ask by 500,000 and taking 500,000 more out of our reserves.
Now, is that the order of things in the budget, on the agenda? Because I think that we changed to 7.5 being the budget.
Sure, but I think what he's just reiterating is that that's the way the budget would read too, is that you're taking 500,000 less out of a.
I think it's a procedural, it's a procedural complaint. We're not currently on the agenda item that allows us to vote. We're currently on the budget discussion, not on the tax levy discussion.
I think it was just misspoken as the levy. It was just 500,000 less in tax increase.
I, but I think the point is procedurally, we can't vote on this right now. Is that?
Yeah, we can. We can't next week.
Item number eight is the tax levy for.
It is a tax levy.
Okay, so we, so we need to move on to item eight.
No, we haven't. What I was saying is it was just misspoken by Alan mentioning the levy. He was just mentioning the 500,000 less of a tax increase is what you meant.
Yeah, because we're in the, I guess we, we're still in the budget discussion of 7.5. If we're done with the budget discussion, then before I would call for the vote on what motion I made, I'd like us to move to item eight, which is ordinance 202467, the 2025 tax levy.
So we're skipping voting on 12, which was moved to 7.5.
Okay, how about if I just drop my motion? Then we'll start over. We'll go, we'll go back to 7.5. We'll finish on 7.5, which is the 2025 budget resolution, which is the ask for the budget. Has nothing to do with the levy right now, just the budget as presented. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to bring up about the budget? To change, add, delete, anything in, in that resolution? Hearing none, I will make the motion that we recommend a council resolution 2024-140R, the 2025 buzz, budget resolution. Motion by Wolf, second by Malone. Roll call, please.
Raza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay.
Uer.
Aye.
Saran.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
That's 13.
13, okay. We'll go to council with a very positive recommendation. And now we will move on to item number eight, which is ordinance 2024-067, 2025 tax levy. And just for clarification, the tax levy as presented has a million dollar ask and additional tax increase. And how much out of reserves?
$3 million.
$3 million out of reserves.
But that's not in the tax levy. The tax levy is only the extra million. Tax levy is only for a million. It doesn't have anything to do with the reserves.
Right, but I want to get the, the explanation of what's what.
Just want to make sure that that's clear though, as we're voting on.
Right.
An additional levy if.
An additional levy, yes.
So basically, the ask that I'm going to put in my motion is for 500,000 instead of the million, which would result in an additional 500 coming out of reserves.
Correct.
That's the impact to, to the overall.
Correct.
So that's the motion that I would make is that the tax levy be 500,000. Second. Okay, motion by Wolf, second by Uer. Roll call, please.
Raza.
Aye.
Lancy.
No.
Beck.
Aye.
Peeper.
No.
Malone.
No.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
No.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malay. Uer.
Aye.
Saran.
No.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
What was it? Sorry.
Aye, sorry.
I've known. Eight, yeah.
So eight to five. That's what I, what I believe it is. So that would pass with the compromise of 500,000 added to the levy. Are we comfortable with that? Or are we going to vote on anything else? Because I, I think.
Next item, please.
Right, I, I think that that speaks to where, well, I think that speaks to where I think we're at.
Keep going.
Right.
Let's keep going.
And this is your recommendation to the city council meeting. And so if you wanted to take other action at the city council meeting, you're free to do so.
All again.
You can vote against him.
And we can do it all again next year as well.
And Kevin, we have in the past, so.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number nine. And item number nine would be ordinance 2024-068, SSA for number 30, stormwater detention area tax levy. Anybody have any questions? These usually go pretty easily. No questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend the council ordinance 2024-068, SSA number 30, stormwater detention area tax levy.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I need to drink water.
Okay. Item number 10, ordinance 2024-069, SSA 42 for stormwater detention area tax levy. Any questions? I'll make that motion. We recommend a council. Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Got it.
Item 11, ordinance 2024 070, SSA 62, Main Street Program Tax Levy. Anybody have any comments, any questions on it? Make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 2024 070, SSA 62. Second.
Take it, Abby.
Beck.
Beck. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And then we've already done item 12, which was 7.5. Move on to item 13, resolution 2024 150R, authorizing agreement with Aptig to develop website and mobile app for the city of Batavia.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to spend some more money next year. So I'll just summarize the memo. We would like to have a new website provider. Current website is underperforming. I don't think anyone would argue that. It's difficult to navigate and search function is pretty bad. We did evaluate many other websites, other website providers, and including working with Civic Plus, our current vendor, to see if we could improve our website. And we did redesign a little over a year and a half ago. We added a chatbot and we're still really unhappy with the product. So before you is a resolution, and the reason that this is a resolution is because we can get a $9,000 discount if we sign with this new company, Aptig, this year. And then they will invoice us in March, which is when we would like to start the migration project, which we figure is going to take about six months to not only develop the new website, but move over all of our content. Also, they're including a web mobile app, I'm sorry, a mobile app. And that will be something we really wanted to do in the strategic plan, as well as to make everything mobile friendly. This website's stackable, so some of the things we currently have, like Viewworks and other things that will come online app-wise, will be integrated much better with our website and mobile app. So what we have here tonight is just a resolution authorizing city staff to sign the agreement before the end of the year. And then there may be a budget amendment next year to cover the costs if those costs are not found in the administrative budget. So I can answer any questions if you have any.
Anybody have any questions? So what you had explained as far as transfer over to that, have we gone through with the departments that would be using that?
Right.
So everybody is already on board?
Yeah, so what we plan on doing is having a, Max and I are going to work on like a project, project management situation where we would have every department currently review their existing content on our website, see what needs to be cleaned up, made, you know, some things may be old, outdated, and can get rid of, and things that we want to archive, we're going to archive internally. And then we would onboard the entire staff who wanted to update the website. That's another thing, too. We're moving to a new, this platform is a lot easier on the backend to use so that more staff could be involved in updating content. Right now, it's pretty much myself and a few other people because they don't regularly update the website, then they have to relearn it all the time because the backend is very confusing. So this is, the backend of this platform is more like a WordPress-based, for those who may know from work, with websites, it's much easier to update. So we will train all staff who are interested, or maybe a representative in every department so that they can update their content. And also, this is hopefully moving forward, I'm not going to be here forever, I have a couple more years to work, but this would transition nicely to another communications manager.
And that's kind of something I wanted to bring out because I thought that that would be very important, that you had the buy-in from the other departments, that everybody would get their chance to, you know, add, delete, find things that they don't, can't stand about what's there currently.
Right.
And get the things in that they wanted from the get-go to make sure that this makes the biggest impact that it can. And I think that's what it sounds like.
Right. And another feature, too, is Aptig is a little bit more, you can kind of build what you want. A lot of these other government website providers are pretty much cookie cutter. You start to recognize they all look alike. This one will have a lot more say in how it looks and navigates, so we'll be able to get departments involved.
Something else that will integrate nicely with this is we so appreciate the investments that council allowed us to make in Laserfish. Laserfish has become a great records management system for us, not only internally for documents, but also public-facing. The search engine in Laserfish is so much more powerful than what is on any of the website platforms that we have. And it just really allows people to do research and to, you know, well, what is everything the city council has ever said about what they'd like to see instead of a dam? For instance, you can cover those 1,000 pages if you'd like. But also, content that we had been archiving within the website itself, we can push all that over to Laserfish. And hopefully, through this process, we'll have only the most important content on the website.
Right. And I'm glad you mentioned that, too, Laserfish. We are, separately from this, we are going to get a new chatbot by CityBot, and that's AI-based, and it will have the Laserfish database on it. So hopefully, you'll be able to search historical record, like minutes from 2012, somebody actually asked for recently. So this will, this will integrate well with CityBot as well, the chatbot.
And we save $9,000.
Pardon?
And we're going to save $9,000 doing it now, right?
$9,000, yep.
And you named the chatbot, if you want to announce that, didn't you?
The chatbot?
Wasn't it named? Wasn't there?
Oh, yes. I forgot to announce that. Yes, the chatbot will be called Wilson, Ask Wilson. We are going to have, probably be a bulldog of some sort, but more of an intelligent-looking one and not like the high school mascot bulldog.
Can't have him be a volleyball with a.
Well, we talked about that. I think there's a copyright infringement on that one.
Cease and desist letter. I want to recognize, kind of to actually Alderman Barron's point a couple weeks ago, that something of this nature will relieve staff time, like so using technology to take away from, you know, from both the backend, but then also dealing with residents' questions or whatever, if they can easily get on and just find information. So I have deep appreciation for that in the long term. I'm just curious, just for transparency, what we're paying right now for our website and then what the yearly will be?
Yes. So currently, what are we paying? We're currently paying 14, a little over $14,000 a year with Civic Plus. Aptig is going to be 16,000. That includes the build, so. And then moving forward, I think it's 12K a year?
Very similar to what.
Very similar, yeah. And, you know, and for reference, I'm not going to out any particular companies, but some of the other government website providers were quoting anywhere from $34,000 a year, or for the upgrade, rather, not a year, to 130,000 for a new website development. So this is a really good price point. And I think we're getting a little bit of a discount, too, because Aptig is, they're branching out into municipal government. They were web providers for, they are for education in school districts mostly. So they're branching out and it's municipalities, so we think they're going to do a good job.
And we will also have to find a substitute for our meetings and agendas area that's in Civic Plus because Aptig doesn't handle that. But there's, I think they don't handle it because a lot of people, people are using different companies for that, like Board Docs and companies like that.
Right, right. And this is why we're not, why we're, because it's going to take so long, we couldn't get this done by January 1 for the budget, so it's not, so there'll be some overlap when we're still obviously paying Civic Plus to provide us with a website for the remainder of the year.
But the agendas could still be posted on this?
Oh, yeah. What other cities have done is they'll post like a PDF of the agenda. But we, you know, we're open to come up with our own solutions.
Yes.
A lot of times, it resides within the website, takes you out to an external app, and you don't even realize you're going there.
Yep. All right, is that it?
Okay.
Thank you.
So would someone like to make a motion on resolution 2024 150R?
Wolf.
Second.
Motion by Lancy, second by Ewer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. On item 14, which is ordinance 2024 058, amending land cash ordinance. Scott, welcome.
Thank you. This is our required every three years review of the land cash ordinance, so we have already gotten to three years here. So we have taken a look at the land cash ordinance and the comparable sales of land that's happened in the last three years. And we found that, you know, the land values have gone up, obviously, significantly so, just because of, you know, the land that's available and the price of real estate in general. With that, our recommendation is to make some changes to the land cash ordinance because of that. We are not looking to bring it to the values that we found. We would still be behind St. Charles and Geneva, pretty significantly so, because they, their land cash values are very high, I believe 240 and 330 or something like that. So right now, our land cash value per acre is 150,000, and we're making a recommendation of an incremental increase to 175,000 per acre. This was reviewed by the Plan Commission, and they were in favor of that change. We also did make two other changes to the land cash ordinance. One was in regards to an appraisal requirement, or an allowance, I should say. That was inadvertently left out of the ordinance when we did the amendment back in 2021, so we're just restoring that paragraph. And then we're also adding in some language that would require that if the school district avails themselves of the land cash values, that it has to be in a project that is either within the city limits or has to get a building permit from the city. The Park District is always required to get building permits from the city for any type of work that they do. However, the school district does not. They do have to get permits for exterior work and things that are not school-related. But we want to make sure that, you know, they're getting the money from these developers for investments, and we want to make sure we have the ability to look at and review and inspect these types of improvements if they're going to use land cash for those types of improvements. So those are the, those are all the changes. It's not a lot of changes, but we do have to do this every three years per ordinance, and that's what our recommendation is.
Anybody have any questions?
And this is all pass-through money with the land. It's pass-through money that we collect from the developers, and then once the school district or park district makes requests for the funding, we then disburse that money. We just had the Batavia School District, or Park District, request some money for the facility they're doing over here. So we recently dispersed, I think, $29,000 to them for that.
Questions? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council, ordinance 2024 058, amending the land cash ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Ewer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that can go on consent, right?
Yeah, that can.
Okay, thank you. Move on. Ordinance 2024 073, amending variance application fees and building permit fees.
Thank you. This is what we had discussed about a year, a little over a year ago, in regards to some changes that staff is recommending for variance fees and what I'll call penalty fees for work that's done without a permit. When we had discussed it at that time, we were still working through the permit study and was elected to table that till the permit study was done, because even though these things were not really looked at directly in that, it was involving fees and other changes. So we are bringing this back to you for consideration. What we are recommending is to increase the permits or the variance fees from $200 to $750, which is similar to what all the non-residential variance fees are. When we look at the staff time that, you know, it takes to do a variance, it costs us just as much time and sometimes more because we're doing more hand-holding for people. So we would just wanted to keep those, you know, on the same level as what our recommendation is. And then we would increase, there's a proposal in here to essentially have a, what I'll call a penalty fee for both variances as well as work that starts without a permit. So the variance, one, if they, you know, blatantly are doing work without needing, you know, the permits and such, the variance, if they need a variance, that we would increase that variance fee to $1,500. And then if they just, and then separately from that, if there's just work that is done without a permit, normally we double the permit fee, but in some cases, the permit fee is $55, so it's really not, not much of a fee at all. So our recommendation is to double the permit fee or a minimum $500 for that type of a situation that we encounter. So we don't encounter them all that much, and, you know, we try not to be, you know, too punitive, but, you know, it is, you know, unfortunately, you know, some people feel that, you know, they can just, you know, get away with things and, you know, try and do it that way, so we just want to have that be kind of a, you know, more of a penalty fee for that type of situation.
Yeah?
I do support the after-the-fact variance fee increase because I do think to encourage people to do things within our codes and what we already have established is important. I do have some concerns about just the residential variance fees. In the few years, you know, in the past few recent years, the couple of variances I remember coming to council have been about fence and a deck. And honestly, I just feel like bumping from 200 to 750 for them to come, is that for them to come to us and to ask for this variance?
That would be the variance application fee.
Application.
Yes, because the, the work that's required for a commercial versus a residential fee is exactly the same. There's no difference. So they get, you know, a pretty substantial discount from what everybody else would have to pay for.
But for them to, yeah, I guess, to ask for a variance on a deck installation, I don't know, that feels like a pretty significant increase, in my opinion.
It is, it is, yes.
Just a reminder, the deck was without a permit.
Well, and then that, and then that would be a different situation.
That's a standard variance fee. We're proposing a change from 200 to 750 for a variance, for a variance, not the permit fee, just if somebody comes in and they need to have an encroachment or, you know, meet, you know, increase the bulk or whatever, the 750 would be the standard variance fee in that, as it's written.
And I still feel like that's a little high.
I agree.
To kind of echo what Alderman Lehman was saying, I think some of the, what has been presented to us were items that were put in by previous homeowners. So now the new previous, now the new homeowner is coming in, and they don't even realize that this was put up without a variance request. And they're just like, looking to just replace it. And then to say, well, now you have to pay all this money for that variance, even though they're replacing it exactly the way, I think that, I kind of go along that that might be concerning, maybe, I don't know if that's normal to be like, well, you weren't the previous owner that put this in, maybe there's a different layer for that type of situation.
Yeah, and we have had a couple of those where, you know, they get caught in the middle, you know, it's the prior owner either didn't do the work without a permit, which we wouldn't penalize them for, for that type of situation, because it's not their fault. But if they need a variance because they want to replace it, you know, like-for-like or something like that, you know, then, you know, that is a potential issue.
Sure.
Yeah, I would like to see some sort of, for them to not get penalized for that.
Right, right.
Mark?
I don't support raising it at all. Just in the time I've been here, five, maybe? I mean, there have not been that many variances that have come through, so I just don't see that it's this pervasive problem that, that people are doing this all the time. And if they were doing this all the time, then we'd be like, hey, is our code, is our code right? We'd have a, that'd be a different discussion to have. So I'm okay with the, with the penalties, because when people blatantly go and do things that they're not supposed to do and they're trying to sneak around something, yeah, then you deserve to be penalized, just like you would if you were breaking the law and speeding down the road. So, yeah, I'm okay with the penalties, just not with increasing the current fees.
If I just may say.
The fee is reflective of the work.
I understand. They just don't happen that often. So it's not, if this was something that we were doing, variances all the time, then again, the answer would be, let's look at our code. If we, and since we don't have them that often, it's, I get it, it's a burden, but I'm telling you, it's like five times. There's really not been that many that I can remember coming to us.
So when we do the setting of fees, we look at trying to cover the expenses it takes to respond to that. So, you know, if we, if we have more of them that we're doing time after time, that's actually more efficient than when they happen on a seldom basis. We're just saying it's probably costing us $750 in resources between reviewing the application, going to the meetings, and bringing it through city council. But we can discount it back to the 250.
Yeah, and I think, you know, what we, when we look at it, the cost to do a variance process for staff, for the Plan Commission fees, everything else, it's the same. It doesn't matter whether it's commercial, whether it's residential, whatever it is, it, you know, the process is the same. I would say, though, that a lot of times in the residential variances, though, it's more expensive for staff because we'd have to do a lot more hand-holding. When you have a commercial developer or an industrial developer, you usually have a professional that understands how the process works, and they just know how it works. And, and I can tell you from, you know, our dealings with even the number we've had, we are doing many, many hours of discussion, staff reports, everything else, hand-holding, discussing, you know, options with them as they go through the process. So it is taking a lot of staff time to go through just a standard variance, no matter what.
I get it, I just, it just doesn't seem like, not saying you guys, it's not worth it.
Right, right, right.
I'm not trying to discount your effort and everything, it just, I'd rather increase the fee for commercial and industrial because they're more, they're spending a lot of money to do something rather than somebody putting up a fence and somebody's like, if somebody wants to have a variance on a, on 100 feet of fence and it's 10% of their cost or more, then that seems unfair compared to the person that's putting up an office building and they're going to pay pennies on the dollar for, for the difference. So I, for our residents, I'd rather not increase their fees, again, to commercial and industrial, make it 2,000, I don't care. I mean, it's, I don't think that that's punitive, and it's more in line with the cost of what they're paying for their construction.
I think it's Sarah, and then I'll come back to the other side. Sarah, go ahead.
Uh, quick, I am, same as these guys, not super comfortable with the enormous increase, especially for residential. I would be in favor of the commercial being, you know, whatever is fitting, but it's a huge jump for residential, so yeah, I'd rather not see that. But I appreciate that it is very labor-intensive, and I.
Right, right, right.
I understand that and see it, so. Thank you for the explanation on that.
Yeah, and I think what we're trying to do is not have the citizens subsidize somebody's somebody's variance request. And that's kind of what's happening here is that every time somebody comes in with a variance, the taxpayers, you, me, you know, everybody else is subsidizing, you know, their variance, so.
I, I would, I'll echo those concerns and maybe make the argument that for a commercial space, that, that's very much part of an investment, a money-making investment to expand their business in some way, to make money well. For a homeowner, it's just kind of an eaten cost, often again, for things that they inherited and are simply trying to maintain the same standard. I might argue, could we, could we codify for residences that are just trying to replace like-for-like for non-conforming uses, a lower or reduced amount, just as a baseline, just so people don't get stuck in kind of that unfair trap, I suppose? Would that be viable?
That's an option, yeah. You could, you could codify it where you have, you know, maybe a two-tier variance, where if it's for, you know, somebody's replacing a like-for-like that's a, you know, encroaching a setback, that that's a lower fee and then maybe a higher fee for, if somebody's got a, a deck and they said, you know what, I just want to encroach into my rear yard side or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could do that.
Because that's what we're really trying to avoid there. And in that case, if they're trying to expand aggressively, as it were, add like a whole new garage or something like that, that would maybe be triggering, okay, that's a massive new project where replacing existing simply due to wear and tear, again, they're just putting them into kind of a.
They're just kind of caught in a trick, man.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's what leads to a lot of discomfort here, I would say. I don't know, I can't speak for everyone.
Amy?
I agree with everyone on the variance aspect. And then on the starting work without a permit, I would be willing to have that conversation again after our new fancy website and our clearer, better laid-out explanations on what people need to get a permit for, because I don't think those pages are currently serving us very well. So after that, then we could talk about raising those.
Just for the record, the deck person got a permit for some of the work that she did on her house, but not the deck.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm just sort of wondering, what is sort of the ratio of variance requests from non-residential and residential? I mean, is it of such a disparity that we could have non-residential sort of subsidize residential variances?
I would say it's probably 50/50, but at the same time, sometimes the commercial and industrial ones are wrapped up in a planned development as opposed to a variance. So they get the relief through the planned development process as opposed to a true variance. So it's, you know, somewhere in that range.
My last comment on this is, I mean, again, I'm going to come back to quality of life in Batavia. We have a lot of codes in place because we like our neighborhoods looked a certain way, we like our houses to be safe and to be nice for the residents and the neighborhood. But that comes at a cost, again, now I'm flipping back to the other side, that actually, like us having strict codes does cost to, to upgrade or change anything, which, I'll be honest, holds people back from doing good things on their property. So I want to be careful with these discussions because we want people to constantly be improving their properties here. But if, if we, if these costs start getting higher and higher, people aren't going to change their fences, they're not going to change their decks, and we're just going to start seeing things running down, getting run down. So we got to keep it where people feel like they can do these things without hitting too many walls or where it's becoming financially difficult to make upgrades, so.
And this, and these really are only in situations where somebody needs to deviate from the code that we've applied. So if somebody just wants a regular fence permit, that's going to be $55 and, you know, you're good to go.
Right, and I understand that, yeah.
So.
I'm just, in general.
But you're, but you're right in the codes, I mean, the codes, we're going to be coming back, you know, in not too distant future with the amendments to our building codes generally. And every year, you know, those codes change and there are usually more and more things that are more difficult, you know, the energy codes, all these other things that, you know, come into play with the codes. So that's all things that, you know, have to be considered as part of that. And that's, you know, countrywide. I mean, there's, there's a standardized building code that comes out there and sometimes you do local amendments, but most of the time, you know, there are these other things and that, that does cost money, you know, obviously, when you, you know, require things. Sometimes it saves money because it allows, you know, for, you know, solar panels and other things like that. But I mean, but for the most part, it, you know, when you amend the codes, usually it's ended up costing more money.
So one of the problems is that do the variance, they have to send out notices to
the neighbors.
Correct.
They have to mail out letters. And what is that radius and what, how many letters normally would go out on that?
500 feet is the standard. Some towns, it's 250, but they exclude the roadway. So on those cases, it's probably around a 300, 400-foot radius essentially. But ours, when we developed our zoning code, the council wanted to give more notice, so ours is 500 feet. So it's, it's a lot. It's regular mail, it's not, it's not certified. Certified is very expensive nowadays, so.
But in some of these neighborhoods, they could be sending out a couple hundred.
Yeah, absolutely. Small lots, downtown.
On top of their cost of these variances, do they also have to pay for the publishing in the paper and everything?
Correct, the public notice is theirs too.
So when residents are doing this, they're not just paying for just this variance, they have other costs associated with that that have been implemented with that.
And a lot of those things are required by state law because of variances too, so.
Other comments or questions? Does anyone care to make a motion on the resolution, or I'm sorry, the ordinance 2024-73, amending variance application fees and building permit fees? Not afraid of that one, huh? You know, I, I guess I, I understand the fear of raising those fees, but I also realize we've had to add staff to be able to handle all the inspections and everything else that we do in that department. And somehow, some of those fees have to get closer to covering the cost of that department. And if we just leave the fees alone and don't ever raise them, we're not, I think, being very good stewards of the department that we have there. And, you know, it's going to get more complex, there's going to be more things added. Again, the energy codes you start talking about, that's going to add another layer or more into the future as we move forward with this. So I think we have to be somewhat realistic about that. Now, I don't know if we have to jump as far as what's proposed here, but I think they do have to be raised. And I think that they have to be somewhat more equitable and, you know, between commercial and residential. And if we raise them too high, then we are going to start getting people that are going to do work without permits or without a variance because they don't want to spend the money on it. And then we're going to be in, you know, that, that spot where we're going in and finding them, and then it gets even worse. You know, we want compliance, it doesn't have to be, you know, this way or the highway. It has to be, you know, an understanding that hopefully we have a really easy website to use and you can do it all on your own. But, you know, we have those out there for a reason, so that way we get things done correctly and we don't put people, the next homeowner or the homeowner after that, into a situation where they get stuck trying to fix what somebody else screwed up.
Scott?
Understanding some of the concerns that I've heard, I mean, if, if we don't feel that the increase to 750 is acceptable, what I could throw out is maybe what we do is say that the residential variances are 500, but then maybe if it's an existing condition that's just replacing an existing condition, we reduce it to maybe 250.
I think that, to me, alleviates the problem of somebody just moved into town, they bought the house, the garage is, you know, coming apart, they want to replace it because it's 60 years old and they want to put it in the same spot it was in. Well, it wasn't put in the right spot 60 years ago. And that's what, I think some of these variances that I recall coming up over the last 20 years have been very similar to that, where something happened a long time ago and, you know, the inspector went, oh, that's fine, just go ahead and put it there. And that's what happened.
What I'm taking away from this is that, first off, I, I'm sensing that we're not like crazy about what's on paper here. And we want to capture a couple of different things, if I'm hearing this right. First, we don't want to play gotcha with folks, so we kind of want to find a way to, to avoid that. I'm also hearing that we maybe want to shift some of the burden from residents to non-residential a little bit. I, that's what I heard at least. And that we can get creative. We can get pretty creative with this, we can kind of have different tiers and different levels. So I might propose that we sort of send it back to the staff to like maybe come up with some creative solutions that doesn't play gotcha, punishes people who do stuff without permit, and maybe shifts the, allow the non-residential to subsidize the residential a little bit. I think that's fair.
I would be careful about is calling it subsidizing because the commercial variances aren't really, aren't really subsidizing individual residential. That's really would be fair.
Sure, understood.
Yeah.
Is something I'd say about work without a permit is that the resident may not know that they need a permit, but I'll tell you, who does?
Anybody in the commercial.
The person doing the work. They know they need to pull a permit with the city.
If it's a contract.
Yes.
Or if it's a reputable contract.
Yes.
When it's somebody that just throws an anonymous comment up on Facebook and wants to do work in town, that's not the one we want. That's not.
Is it possible to also include how many variances have, could you also include how many variances have been requested, maybe in the last two or three years?
Yeah, I mean, it's probably.
Or as far back as you go.
Seven, maybe.
So when you, when you come back on the memo, if you could just have that added into the memo?
Sure.
And just, just for clarification, while we've got Scott up here, are we okay with like a two-tiered setup where if it's an existing condition, it's 250 and instead of going to 750, say 500 for it, for the full variance process for residential? So that way, when we come back, we don't have to have another 20 or 40-minute discussion on this.
Really quickly on the existing, though.
What?
So really quickly on the existing. So if I'm putting up a fence, I'm replacing my fence, and it's going to go in the exact same place, and that is non-conforming.
It's also a six-foot fence. So in an area where you can only have a four-foot fence, you're coming in on a six-foot fence.
I've got.
Differently. So right now, the way the code is, is if it's, if it's an existing fence and it's a legal fence, like, you know, where it is in their property and it's not in the right of way, we allow like-for-like replacement without a variance.
So there wouldn't be, okay. It's a, I'm replacing my deck. I'm replacing my deck that's been there for 20 years and I moved into that house. I don't think anybody should have to apply, apply for a variance at all because if you're keeping the same footprint, there should be zero cost to that. It would just be like, you come out and they're saying, hey, I'm replacing my deck, and then here's the footprint, you can look at it and you're going to say, well, that sucks, and you're just going to say yes. It should be zero cost. Because you're going to say, that sucks, it is out of variance, or it's non-conforming, but it's not your fault because you bought the house 10 years ago and the deck has been there for 20 years. I don't, I just don't think we should charge anybody for that.
Well, I was just going to probably say that. The variances we had for kind of like-for-like were probably a little bit of an outlier, just that we happen to have two pretty, in pretty quick succession. Generally, I think that a lot of the variances we do get are for, I want to add more, something, you know, either more structure, more deck, more what have you. Or that's generally more what the inquiries tend to be. I mean, I think we can grab the numbers in terms of what they've actually been. I know that kind of when we had this initial discussion, it kind of also did follow a variance where we did have somebody just doing work without a permit, know, you know, essentially knowingly, so.
And that's different. They should be penalized knowingly, and again, if you're working with a reputable contractor, you're going to have to pay for that. The contractor's going to know, the contractor's going to tell you, hey, I can pull the permit for you or you can do it. I mean, that's, that's what they do and, but if a contractor comes in and, and, you know, puts these plans down and it's like, you know, the deck is in the exact same spot, we shouldn't be charging anybody anything for that.
And we do also have situations where, you know, what we'll call maybe less, less-than-scrupulous contractors, they come in and, you know, go to a homeowner and say, ah, you know what, don't worry about the permit, you don't have to get one, or whatever. And so they do the work and then the homeowner gets caught in the crossfire in some of those situations, so.
And that's, I don't know how to handle that, but that's different from charging a variance fee for somebody that's already out of variance. I'm just talking about the one thing.
We've got to take responsibility at some point, you know? I mean, you've got to do your due diligence when you're buying your home, too.
I, I don't know if we're going to resolve this here now, right? Maybe, maybe we, just for the sake of time, like kick it back to staff and, and say, try again, respectfully?
We could take, we could take the feedback we've got.
Is that fair?
And retool it and, you know, see what, you know, based on the input we've had and see what.
Thanks for the comments.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to item 16, which is Resolution 2024-147R, authorizing mayor to execute mutual release of claims with Michael's signs for termination of contract.
Unfortunately, this item is not a positive item on tonight's agenda. Back in September 3rd, city council voted to approve a contract with Michael's signs. And staff's recommendation to bring that through council was based on references that we had received from the villages of Glencoe, Foxlake, and Libertyville. All received positive references, even though Michael's signs price was considerably lower than the second lowest bidder. During the bid process, we had actually three different addendums. Each of those addendums answering a contractor's questions. Some contractors asked, can we change this? Can we change that? The answers to the contractors were, no, you cannot change that, please bid on the items in the contract. So after council approved the contract, later in September, we had a pre-construction meeting. And during that meeting, Michael's signs, and Michael's signs did not submit any questions during the bid process, so just put that out there. They were not one of the ones that asked for changes during the bid process. But at the pre-construction meeting, they asked if the city would consider an alternate design for its sign. And we responded saying that we'll look at it, but we don't want to have any design that would decrease the lifespan. For those of you, just to refresh everyone's memory, we have, our signs have a concrete base, concrete footers, then a solid concrete base that sits above the surface of the ground. That concrete base has full-size stone fascia around it. And then sitting on top of that concrete base is the, is a cap, and then the aluminum sign. And it was designed that way so that the next time the city changes its logo, we can pull off the aluminum cap and then drop on another aluminum sign. And so the, the base should last as long as this building lasts. I mean, it's concrete and stone. We want those bases out there, you know, essentially forever, and then we can always modernize, do whatever we want to with the sign on top of it. That's how it was designed. So Michael's proposed a design that consisted of the concrete footer, but then instead of the solid concrete base and full-size stone, they proposed a, a steel-framed base with plywood and a, and a thin veneer stone. And we said, that's, that's absolutely not, you know, acceptable because moisture's going to get in and corrode that steel and rot that plywood. They said that they would give us a guarantee, a lifetime guarantee, which is only as good as long as they're in business. And of course, you know, that, that was not what the design was. We went back and forth with shop drawings at five different times and find, actually, the third time, we told them to return to the, to the contract documents and we weren't going to consider alternatives anymore after they submitted the same alternative three times. And then they submitted it twice more, which then brings us to tonight. The attorney, Drendel, after we went through all of these steps, he has helped us to draft this mutual release of claims, which basically will, if the mayor signs it, will terminate our contract with Michael's signs. Michael's signs has subsequently said that they just felt that they were very confident in their design and that if they could become the low bidder and get awarded a contract that they could convince the city to go with their design. And, and that was their approach, as opposed to asking us upfront. We talked about, you know, pursuing a performance bond or other damages, but you can see that with the cost of the contract, it's, there's, there's not a whole lot of funds there that we wouldn't spend on attorneys if we, if we started to do that. Michael's contract is only $59,100. And then the next lowest bidder was Aurora Sign Company. So Aurora Sign Company was the, was the company that built our first four signs, and they did an excellent job. We were very pleased with them. They provided good customer service and did good work. Their bid, though, you know, was $116,000 compared to Michael's $60,000. But if you look at Michael's $60,000, it's, it's not really a real bid because it, it isn't based on the actual design that we wanted. Aurora Sign was the lowest bidder and their bid was in the same ballpark as the, as the next two bidders above them, all in that low $100, $150,000 range. So that's probably where the signs are price-wise. Again, this is for three signs. Realistically, that's probably where the signs are price-wise. And Aurora Sign Company is willing or would be willing to honor that price and move forward with the city if we were to choose to do that. And that would have to be a separate action. If council wants to give direction to do that, we can bring that back at a, at a future meeting here in December to move forward with Aurora Sign. But tonight, we need to terminate our contract with Michael's signs, just eliminate this contract and move forward. He is not going to meet our contractual requirements and against damages against them. But given the value of the contract, I think we'd end up spending considerable funds on attorneys as opposed to just moving on. So that's the recommendation.
Anybody have any questions? Unfortunately, I think this is the right way to go. You know, it's just, it's too good to be true.
What's disappointing, again, is, is we did get good, good recommendations from the other communities. And it's, it's the after the fact, oh, we thought you would just approve this design. That's, that's what's frustrating.
Someone care to make a motion on Resolution 2024-147R, authorizing the mayor to execute mutual release of claims with Michael's signs for termination of contract?
Vote. Second?
By you or second by Soffa? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys still there online?
Yes, you're still here.
Although I will say there's nothing wrong with paying attorneys.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Now we'll move on to item 17, project status. Laura?
Just a few quick things. Already this past weekend, we are seeing people utilizing the shared parking at the Batavia Public Library, so really happy to see that. And again, we want to thank our partners at the Batavia Library for agreeing to allow us to do that during the hours that they are closed. We finished up leaf collection for the year 2024 today, so if anybody still has leaves that they have to put out at the curb, Groot is going to pick those up for free during the month of December. You just put them in the craft paper bags and leave them down at the, at the curb on your normal pickup day, and those get picked up for free. Also wanted to note that the, the city achieved Salt Smart certification this year, which was one of the items that's in the Greenest Region compact. And thank you for, Alderman Beck, for being a proponent of us pursuing that certification. Things that you might see the city do in conjunction with that, that, and we really have for the past several years, is getting out there to put brine on the streets before we know that a snowfall is coming, which significantly reduces the amount of the rock salt that we then have to use to keep the roads clear of ice. We are also, in the month of January, going to have an educational display here at City Hall out in the reception area. Is that right, January? Yep. That will tell more about Salt Smart certification for anybody who wants to learn more and will be, will put more information online about that. We have a cannabis dispensary who is coming to the plan commission for the conditional use at their December 8 meeting. And that's all I have unless anybody has a, oh, I'm sorry. 18th, yeah, December 18th. They have my glasses on. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
No questions, just a comment. We're still going to get the questions about why there's lines on the streets because
I know, I try. Or another question that I get is, why is there rock salt on the side streets before we get a huge snowfall? And the reason is because we have 10 people who clear 10 square miles of, how many miles of streets in total?
120-some.
120-some miles of streets. And so when a heavy snowfall is going to come during a high travel period of the day, those folks need to be traveled, focused on the high travel roads at that time and make sure that they are clear. And then once we get past the morning rush or the evening rush, then they can go and focus on the neighborhoods. But when anybody pulls out of their driveway at 6:00 AM to head to work, we want to make sure that their road is as safe as possible. So that's why you might see that rock site, salt out there. And it sounds like we may have some flakes flying yet this week.
Any other questions? Anybody have any others for this evening?
Dustin.
Dustin?
Just a request of clarification for the Prairie Wilson intersection. I've noticed, I, I've heard, in fact, from folks, some confusion coming from the southbound north, whether they should be stopping at the first set of lights or if people should proceed to the, to the second set of lights if there's nobody there. It's a little confusing with the crosshatching in the intersection.
There's room for like two cars.
Yeah.
So you can go across.
Should you stop in the crosshatch?
Yeah.
So additional
That covers all the way up to the stop part.
Additional signage will be put out there, letting people know to stop behind this line. Am I correct, Gary?
That's correct.
Yes.
People are probably really familiar with an Aurora like Sullivan Road or Lake Street, you're approaching and you have to stop at the first stoplight.
Yeah.
Why people feel they can go through a stoplight, that's, that's a little questioning, but that, we were seeing a lot of driver behavior doing that, so.
Yeah.
Yes, we do need additional signage. That signage needs to be installed out there, but yes, when a red light is showing, you can't drive through it.
Very good. Well
Good, Claire, it's kind of weird.
Yeah.
Well, it's also, if you pay attention, as that light is turning yellow to red, the further one is still green. It's allowing you to get through the intersection.
Okay.
So
They're from the tracks to the light.
Yes, exactly. You're supposed to clear
There's only room for like one and a half of paths to the tracks.
I didn't think there was any, I thought it was all
So if you're that second or third car, you're kind of like, oh, crap, I just did it the other day.
Yeah.
So I get
My manager's
I force myself to drive over there and drive through the intersection so I can see what it's like.
Well, because even though you shouldn't have, when they were stop signs, you know, you always taught, don't stop on the tracks, but people would always, you know, because